Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We're calling to order the meeting, a special meeting of the Jackson City Council, March 18th, 2025, at 10:00 a.m. We are very fortunate today to have with us Associate Pastor Katie Giede of Galloway Memorial United Methodist Church. Reverend Giede, if you would please come to the microphone and make sure the green button's on. And then, as soon as she finishes, I'm going to ask Mr. Hartley if he will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Okay. Would everyone please stand?
I wanted to thank Council President for this opportunity, and I invite you all to join me now as we go to the Lord in prayer. Let us pray. Loving Father, thank you on behalf of all those gathered here on this day. Thank you for the many blessings in our lives and for life itself. May we be reminded that it is a gift. We give you praise for all of the callings on each of our lives and for the ways that you have called each of us to serve our beloved city of Jackson. In the Scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established the very authorities to promote peace, order, and justice. Therefore, we pray for our mayor, for our various levels of city officials, and in particular, for this assembled city council and all those gathered here on this day. We pray that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amidst conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and the true needs of the people of Jackson, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting for our city, the ability to work together in harmony, even in the midst of honest disagreement, and for personal peace in their lives and joy in their task as they serve the city they call home. I pray for the agenda set before them. Please give these leaders guidance and wisdom as they strive to do the work that brings them together today. We pray all this in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
We appreciate your taking the time to be here with us today and for that beautiful invocation, and thank you, Mr. Hartley, as well. We do not have a public hearing today. Council members, any introductions? Mr. Foot?
Yeah, I think I'd like to open and close the meeting on behalf of all the other towns and cities across Mississippi that got hit by the tornadoes, Taylorsville, Tyler Town, and many others. And lives uprooted, a number of people passed away. And think about them, you know, in the days ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Foot. Any other introductions? Okay, thank you. All right, we now, we're going to move right into public comments. We just had a fifth public comment added, so we have a total of five. They all have a topic. None of them have an agenda item attachment. All right, so we're going to, let me just start by saying that we have three minutes allotted for each person to speak. We ask that you be respectful of that time period. You will get a warning when your time is close to coming to an end by the clerk here in the green dress, and then, when your time is up, she will let you know with the sign as well. All right, so Andre Nathaniel is here to talk to us about adding electronic smoking to our existing ordinance. Welcome. And please, everyone, when you come to the mic, please state your name for the record and make sure the green light's on. Thank you.
Hello, how you doing?
Hello.
My name is Andre Nathaniel. I am the project director for the Mississippi Tobacco-Free Coalition Program of Harris County. I'm just here to ask you all to add electronic cigarettes to your smoke-free ordinance. You have a smoke-free ordinance you passed about a decade ago, but back then, electronic cigarettes wasn't popular. But now, we know the youth are doing it in different schools and things like that. You see them on public places doing it. But it would be wise if it was added to your smoke-free ordinance, like other cities has, Byron has it on there, it's Terry and Clinton, places like that. So, the ordinance has already been passed over a decade ago, but back then, smoke-free electronic cigarettes were the preface then. So, I have some literature here today that you can go over and be happy to pass out to you.
Hand it to the clerk, and thank you so much. And thank you for bringing this to our attention. I think this is an easy fix, and we appreciate this very much.
Okay, and I'll leave my card where I want everything, get situated. The clerk, just give me a call.
Thank you. We appreciate your coming before us today.
All right, thank you.
All right, next, we have Larry Loper, who's here to speak to us about Grove Park and the Viaduct.
Good morning, and I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak before you. Proud citizen of Brinkley Place, Grove Park, Shady Grove, however you want to term that that community for well over 60 years. And I applaud you for doing the renovations to the park, the $1.3 million. It's going to do a lot for the community. Right now, and I was very disappointed, because I usually go over and just sit and hang out for whatever it is, and I see a lot of people that use it, and they've closed the park now, and I understand in anticipation of the renovations that are coming on. There's two things that I wanted to say. One was, it would be nice if you guys would be transparent and let the community know, put some signage up, do something, say, hey, you know, this is what we're doing. Right now, it's not transparent. You know, we've had a lot of things promised in the city, like the Viaduct being opened, which is one of the things, that's been 10 years ago. So, now, we're going to do the park. I hope it's not going to take 10 years to do the park. Okay? So, to have some transparency and let everybody know, I think, would make a difference. Now, my primary concern is the Viaduct, which has been closed, as I mentioned, for 10 years. I understand that, I've been told it's the railroad, but it's the city road. Not the railroad, it's the city road that I'm talking about, that we need access to. If we're going to do that park, we need access from the main road, which is Livingston Road. Other than that, you've got to come through the community. And it is for the community, mind you, but there are a lot of people that visit that park that are not a part of the community for various reasons. I'd like to know, and I've been told that it was going to be cleared, does anybody have a timeline? I mean, we've been talking about it for long. Nobody's saying anything about anything.
Dr. Mori, he's talking about the improvements that are going to happen at Grove Park, and that they would like to at least have some sort of signage about, you know, what's happening and proposed timeline on the completion.
Okay, good morning.
Good morning.
I don't know the proposed timeline, and I'm going to defer, if anyone is here, from Parks and Rec or Mr. Wright or Legal. Okay, now, the timeline for improvements at the park.
Well, two things that I mentioned. One was the timeline and some signage or some, you know, transparency as to what the heck's going on with the park, you know, just let the community know. And the other thing that I mentioned, in conjunction with that, is the opening of the Viaduct. I think it's Dutchwell Road that accesses into Livingston Road and goes to Ridgeway. And, you know, not just the park, not the access, but, you know, I mean, ambulances, first responders, nobody, I mean, we're just kind of in a choke point right now.
Okay, to the first part of your question, I know there was a press conference held and there was a community meeting held around Grove Park, where everything was discussed about the improvements that were being made. If you need additional information on that, we can reach out to Parks and Rec and have them do some signage to help keep that in people's mind that that is what's happening.
That would be absolutely wonderful.
Okay, we can do that. With regards to the Viaduct, that was closed quite some time ago.
A long time.
We filed a lawsuit, and we're still, that's still going through the system. There was, there's a lot involved, more than we want to talk about, in what happened and how that Viaduct ended up being closed. But the most I can say right now is that the city has filed a lawsuit to get it reopened.
Well, let me just say this in closing, you know, that bridge is probably 70 years old. And just like they took down Rex Brown Power Plant, they've drained Lake Caco over there, which we still don't know what we're going to do with, okay? And now, we've got that choke point. I mean, it needs to be modernized, the bridge does. I know that's the railroad, but the city has imposed the pressure with your lawsuit, which is appreciated. But that's the first I've ever heard. And that, again, also is something that needs to be advertised or being transparent, because I want to know, everybody else wants to know, what the heck is going on? Okay? And I thank you for the time.
Thank you so much, sir. We appreciate your coming before us today to raise these questions. Mr. Stokes?
Thank you so much, and I want to thank the gentleman for coming and speaking up and speaking out, because it's killing that whole area of Jackson. People, they can't believe that they can't get from one end of Jackson through the Viaduct. The golf course is abandoned, which was a draw to get people into that neighborhood. Those are some of the most expensive houses in the city that black people own, that are now going down the drain. So, you know, they just need some action. You know, we hear a lot of talk, and talk is good, but they need some action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Okay, next, we have Clancy West, who is here to talk about crime. Welcome.
Okay, my name is Clancy West. I live at 2512 Cornet Place.
Ma'am, could you move the mic a little closer to your mouth, so we can hear you? It's very...
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Thank you.
We want to hear you.
Okay, my name is Clancy West. I live at 2512 Cornet Place, and someone has been breaking into my home. They came in and they took one of my phones with all my personal information and PINs in it, and they also have been taking...
Excuse me just a minute. Y'all, is there any way we could cut down on the noise in the hallway? Because this is, we've got to have the door open. We've got to have the door open. Thank you, Mr. Hartley. Please continue, and I apologize for the interruption.
And also, all of my important documents have been taken. I don't know how they're getting into my home, because no windows or anything has been tampered with, and I'm thinking they're going through the front door, but I'm not for sure. I just feel violated with people just coming in and out of my house when I leave, and it just seems like somebody that knows when I'm leaving home and coming. And I usually go to Bible study on Tuesdays, and that's when it started, and I see things moved around in my house and on Sundays. So, I'm not sure, I know it's a light on McDowell Road, the crime light, so I was just trying to see if we could get one in the neighborhood.
Yes, ma'am. Right behind you are two police officers, and they, if you would go with them, they'll be able to help you, they'll be able to help you right now. They'll be able to talk to you about this. And I'm so sorry that's happening to you. Okay, and thank you for coming before us today. All right, next, we have Zach Service, who's here to talk about concerns of the city of Jackson.
Good morning, Zach Service, resident Ward III. First thing about signage, we are still dealing with political signage and business advertisements all over utility poles, multiple political signs per premise, all in clear violation of the city code in chapter, I believe it's 102, as well as the chapter six for business advertising. One particular spot where council candidates have multiple of their signs is the intersection of West Northside Drive and California Avenue. There's just, across the city, it's polluting it, and for some reason, this administration will not enforce signage ordinances. I don't know why, but it needs to be enforced. It's our code of ordinances. It says, you can't do this, or you must pay a fine, or go to jail. It's in the city code. So, if we're not going to enforce it, at least get with the council so that we can amend it, since nobody seems to want to follow those rules. And it's not just council people, it's even people advertising their businesses. I mean, every utility pole down the road has an Obamacare sign on it, from somebody trying to sell Obamacare. I don't think they government. So, we need to fix that. And then, too, I do want to point to, three weeks ago at the last council meeting, I proposed an ordinance and a program that would allow those who have committed nonviolent crimes and misdemeanors to pay off their fines with community service and picking up trash. And I do want to thank the mayor's administration for rolling out my program, which is called Clean Sweep. Yesterday, they announced it. I was surprised they chose to use the name that was on my website. I figured they would pick a different name, but I appreciate the credit. I think it's good when we give credit to residents who create solutions. So, I just want to encourage you guys, because I did notice it was a bit more generic than my plan. It's missing case studies of Vicksburg, which is right down the road, but it did happen to have a case study of New York City. But I think we would be better served if we actually studied the more local municipalities that have already implemented these programs. So, I want to encourage you guys to take a look at that, see what you can do to implement that as well. And I think it's good that you're taking feedback from residents and listening to the people, so I want to thank the mayor's administration for that. You have a good one.
Thank you. All right, now, we're moving on to the final speaker today, Abby Peterson, who's here to speak about immigration.
Hey, good morning. Yeah, I wanted to bring up an issue we've been having, sorry. I'm too tall. Is that better?
Yeah, put it up on the...
Like that?
There you go.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. An issue we've been having with contacting the Jackson Police Department. So, I'm an immigration attorney in the area, and a lot of my clients reside in Jackson and have been the victims of violent crime. Since about 2020, we've had a policy with the police department that's published on their website that states how an individual who is the victim of a crime and has been cooperating with the police department can receive a certification from the police department stating that they were the victims of this crime and that they have cooperated with the police department. But in the last six months or more, I've had an issue with the police department not getting back with us. So, based on what's listed on the Jackson website, the persons that we're supposed to contact for these types of requests are Captain Shakita Childs and Lieutenant Obie Wells, Jr. I have since September of 2024 contacted them no less than 10 times, by email, by phone calls, by in-person, just drop ties, by text message, and we have not received any sort of resolution to our requests. Since February of this year, I've started going to Deputy Chief Banks to request assistance in contacting them. I similarly have not gotten any sort of response. So, my question is, when we are told to, that in order to speak with these people, we have to have a meeting, but to schedule that meeting, we have to speak with these people, what is our remedy? We're stuck in the Catch-22 situation, where there's no way to talk to the people we need to talk to.
Yeah, do you have a suggestion on that, Dr. Mori, or Mr. Wright, or City Legal? City Legal? All right, thank you. Thank you. All right, colleagues, we're moving on now to the agenda. We will start with the consent agenda.
All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'm assuming there's no reason to pull any of these items out separately. So, with that, all in favor? It's a vote of six to zero. Thank you. All right, we are moving now. Oh, seven, zero. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I'm glad somebody can count today. This is going to be an exceptional meeting, colleague, so let's just try to get through it. All right, so we're moving now to introduction of ordinances, where we have a hefty lift. We are, just so you know, colleagues, we are going to discuss any of these introduction of ordinances that need to be discussed today, but I would like to remind you that we have a meeting in one week, when the chiller will be installed. And so, unless there are some real burning issues on these proposed ordinances, let's hold or minimize discussion until the next work session and the next city council meeting. We are going to hold item 14, we're holding item 14 until next week's meeting. All right, clerk, item 10.
Ordinance amending section 2-62 of the Jackson Code of Ordinances.
Colleagues, this is really just a housekeeping item for us, and we can discuss that more in detail next, when Ms. Jordan can be here. Any other discussions? All right, item 11.
Ordinance amending section 2-64 of the Jackson, City of Jackson Code of Ordinances for the purpose of reconciling the order of business of the council meetings.
Again, this is housekeeping for us, and if you haven't had a chance to read these two ordinances in the book, I encourage you to do that, but one of the things we will be doing, which Ms. Jordan can get into more detail next week, we will be introducing the 6:00 p.m. meetings once again. All right, so, any other questions on this item? All right, item 12.
Ordinance of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, requiring nightclub security guards to complete an eight-hour orientation course provided by the Jackson Police Department.
Mr. Hartley, this is your item. Do you have anything to discuss today?
Yes, I just wanted to bring this up. I'm introducing this, and it started, the thoughts going on, we have a nightclub in my ward, and what happened is, we have a lot of complaints and issues, and we met with the chief. The chief pretty much gave us a synopsis of what could happen if the nightclub management wasn't working correctly. And then, the worst happened. There was a homicide there. But it underscored the fact that there's a lot of information and knowledge with our JPD that the security at these clubs need to have. We can do a better job of working together with the clubs and nightclubs, and what it does is it protects everyone. JPD now has more experience and informed folks at the clubs. The club has more coverage, because now they know a lot of the ground rules. The patrons are protected, because now they have, in essence, more security protection there. All this is, is an orientation. It's not a certification, you don't get your golden badge and all that, but it is a way of exchanging information, so that the public can be better protected as they go out and enjoy and unwind. And so, that's the reason behind this, and hopefully, we can have more successful businesses as nightclubs, hopefully, we can have more educated. It's a little bit more than just finding your biggest cousin and giving them a badge and a gun. They need to have some kind of connection to the law enforcement apparatus, or at least some kind of orientation, and that's what this ordinance is putting forth.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley. Any other comment at this time? This is just an introduction. All right, we're going to move on now to adoption of ordinances, and we're going to take up item 13, clerk.
Ordinance of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, to modify chapter 114 of the City of Jackson Code of Ordinances to create chapter 114, Article 5, for the purpose of ordinances related to the regulation of medical cannabis business activities.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Colleagues, this, we did have the opportunity to discuss it last week, and, or really, two weeks ago, three weeks ago. Any other additional conversation about this ordinance at this time?
Please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes?
Thank you. Mr. Keen, could you explain to the public what we're trying to accomplish?
Good morning, Eka Hoover, Economic Development. So, this is about making sure that the medical cannabis businesses...
Did you put the mic in your, I'm just literally like in your mouth. Thank you.
This ordinance is about making sure that the medical cannabis businesses in Jackson adhere to the same regulations, where they're able to operate, what hours they're able to operate, disposal methods and all, and that does also come with fees associated with licensing businesses, as with any other business.
Do we have any mechanisms set up with the police department where we get reports similar to with pawn shops?
No, not to my knowledge. I don't think that there's an ordinance that I'm aware of that speaks to the necessity of JPD being a part of medical cannabis.
If, if I can, Councilman...
Mr. Mayor.
Stokes, can you, can you expound on your question a little bit?
Yeah, some neighborhoods where they have this dope situation, people, businesses are moving out. What we did with pawn shops, we got the police department involved years ago, where anytime people bringing things in, it's reported to the police department. We had police officers at pawn shops, so we could monitor. And some kind of way with this dope situation, marijuana situation, we need to create a relationship where our police department know what each one of these entities are doing, make sure that people who are legitimately getting the medical marijuana is okay, but what about the others? It shouldn't be a medical marijuana situation where there's one person getting over and over and over, and they're getting into the streets, especially in wards like Myers and Hartley's, where they getting this dope, passing it down through these dope dealers, and they selling it, and especially to the children. So, we need a police presence to monitor who doing what, what's going on, and then, it would at least slow something down. I'm not saying it to stop it, but it's a lot of people making money under the table with this dope, and some kind of way, I hope that the city will get involved to try to stop it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, we can be certain that we, you know, through the registration, identify the locations and know where they're dispersed through the city. With respect to monitoring, you know, we'll do all that we can without trampling on anyone's HIPAA rights, because this is medical marijuana, and it is diagnosed by a physician, but we will monitor the locations and see if there's any connection between the distribution or the sale of medical marijuana or medical cannabis to any issues that we see in the streets.
Thank you, Madam President. And we trust doctors, love them, but we know it's a lot of people who really should not qualify for medical marijuana getting it. Now, we can prove it by names and people and everything else, and it's getting into the streets, especially in the poor neighborhoods. So, if we do not show that we know what's going on, and it's got to stop, then it's going to keep growing. So, again, I think this is a step by you trying to institute something, but we're going to send a message that, you know, Jackson's not for sale, you're not going to bring this dope in here and mess up people's lives through the back door. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Foot?
Thank you. I've got some questions in the beginning of this ordinance. It's got all these different types of cannabis operations that take place to get it from the, being grown in a cultivation facility to all the way to the dispensary. I know we've got some dispensaries. Do we have any cultivation facilities and or research facilities or micro-processing cannabis facilities in the city of Jackson?
From memory, I think there is one cultivation facility, but the rest of them are dispensary.
So, the dispensary is the main thing we're talking about regulating here?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Foot. Any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, all in favor? So, vote is seven, zero. Thank you. All right, we are moving now. Again, we will take up item 14 at the next city, at the next meeting, which is just one week from today. one week from today. Mark your calendar. Item 15, claims.
Order approving claims appearing at pages 2, 6, 3, to inclusive thereof, a municipal docket of claims in the amount of $4,882,828.61, and make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second on claims. Mr., oh, Mr. Malanbecka's not here. Oh, there she is. Hello. Would you please go over larger claims for us?
Good morning. Sharon Timms, Deputy CFO. Our larger claims is going to be Richard's disposal for trash collections for December 2024. They'll be coming from Fund Nine Sanitation and Landfield. That's $851,000. Our second largest claim is also Richard's disposal trash collection for December of 2024. I believe that's going to be January, though. It's $851,000. Our next largest claim is the Evans Agency. It's going to come from the legal department. It's WC Insurance, January 25, 2025 premium. It's coming from Fund One General Fund for $373,461. And then our last one is Energy. It's coming from Planning and Development. It's the street lighting. It's coming from Fund One General Fund. It's $372,197.68.
All right, thank you. Mr. Foot?
Thank you. Question regarding the payouts to Richards for disposal. What I'm interested in knowing is where we stand on receipts that we get from Jackson Water for garbage billing versus how much we've paid out to Richards for garbage pickup since the beginning of this fiscal year in October 1.
I don't have that with me. I can look it up. I have my computer here. I can look it up and tell you exactly what we've collected so far from Jackson Water and what we've paid out.
It's really important, because I'm, my guess is we're running a big deficit, and we need to be, the council needs to be aware of just how far deep in the hole we are on garbage collections versus, or not, not the collection of garbage, but the collection of the bills from Jackson Water and versus the money we're paying out to Richard's disposal. So if you can get that number, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I will get that for you.
Thank you.
Question?
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
Uh, thank you. We've had, we've had some concerns with some of Richard's workers, and I hope legal will check, so we'll know, because I didn't have the answer when they came to me, that they were promised a salary that's not being acted upon, acted upon, in terms of them being paid $60,000. My understanding, they're saying that they took insurance, and they reduced their salaries, and they never did make it to the promised amount of $60,000. Could you get a report to this council, legal, finance, so we'll know what's going on, whether they lied to this council? And I think when, when the council member for Ward Four was here, a law was created that you cannot lie to the council. But we need to have some answers that we can talk to the employees at Richards about whether or not what was told to this council is being acted upon. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stokes.
The invoices that we receive does not have the salary of their employees. I will check with legal to see if we can get that information from them.
Thank you. And get a copy to all council members, but I should have one, because they came to my home, and I want to make sure I answered their questions.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other questions about claims? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Okay, it, it's a vote of, can we, I need to see the votes again.
It's four, three.
No, no, what was it?
Four, three.
Four to three? Okay, I didn't see all of them. You got it? Okay, thank you. It's a vote of four to three. All right, we're moving on to payroll.
Order approving gross payroll included payroll deduction claims number 314202, and make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
So moved, second.
I'm sorry, did we get them?
Yes, second.
Okay, I'm sorry. We had a-
It's hard to hear, yeah.
All right, any questions about payroll? Hearing none, all in favor? Mr. Stokes, how do you vote on payroll? Okay, it's a vote of seven zero. All right, we're moving on to item 17.
Order confirming the mayor's nomination of Mrs. Burbett Maura Taylor to fill the unexpired term of Letitia Simmons Johnson on the Jackson Public School District Board.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. The mayor is not here to introduce her. Dr. Omari, would you like?
Oh, school. Good morning. We are pleased to make the recommendation for the confirmation of Mrs. Taylor to the school board. We had a very productive meeting with her where we were made aware of all of her experience and her extensive work, previous work with the school board. And we are excited that someone is committed to the development of our children and the further improvement of Jackson Public Schools is willing to serve. So at this time, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Clay for the recommendation, and we respectfully request that you confirm her. So, Ms. Taylor, if you could come to the podium?
Welcome. And just please push the button so the green light, and so this is your opportunity to say a few words to us if you would like, if you would like to do so.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
And I want to thank everyone for the opportunity to serve. It was kind of a, not on my radar when, when I was asked about this, and I said, well, I can't tell everybody else to do something if I won't do anything. Children are my passion. Education is my passion. I'm still working in it, even though retired in 217, 2017, I'm still working. Our goal is to make sure our children are prepared for jobs that don't exist yet, and I am just pleased and thankful for the opportunity to be able to give back and serve for so much was given to me through public education. So I thank you again.
Thank you so much. Just stay, please stay there, because the council now has an opportunity to ask you questions. We're gonna, colleagues, I'm just going to keep it to one round unless we see it's that we need a second round of questions, and I'm going to start with Councilwoman Clay.
Okay, I don't have a question for you. I thank you for being willing to serve Ward Two and the Jackson Public Schools, and look forward to all the things that you bring to the school board, and thank you for being willing to serve.
Thank you. Mr. Stokes?
Thank you so much. Ms. Taylor, I'm trying to quickly read your bio, but I see where mathematics is what you-
Yes. I majored in mathematics, and the reason I did was because I wouldn't have to teach if I had a degree in mathematics. I became a teacher because, or got my teaching certification because my dad said you always need some insurance. I went into the business world, planned to stay there. When we moved to Mississippi, and I had children, it was my time to say, well, maybe I need to look into teaching. One of the best decisions I ever made, I also learned never to say never, which you won't do. Started off in Jackson Public Schools, got my first taste of school and being a teacher at Rowan Middle School, which was really my heart, middle school. We were just beginning the middle school concept, and it was eye-opening and enlightening for me, and particularly in raising my children. From there, I moved on into administration, being assistant principal in Heinz County School District at Gary Road Elementary. Again, I found another love, because no matter what went on that day, when you dismissed school and those little children came and gave you that hug at the end of the day, everything was right with the world. I moved on from there to be federal programs director at Heinz County, which I still continue to work and consult with different school districts, and also serve as a contract worker with the state of Mississippi for that service. And it's there that I love, because I get to teach and work with new federal programs directors, giving them insight and all, so that they can meet the rigorous requirements of the law.
That's good.
Okay.
I got to get this-
Don't get me started talking.
She's a good teacher.
I live in Ward. South Carolina State, I saw it somewhere.
Yes, Bulldogs.
Now, we can't hold that against you.
No, because I'm a winner either way, because I got my master's in administrative certification from VI Love Jackson State University. Season ticket holder.
So, can we-
Chow who was on the boom. All right.
Can we, can we ignore, now, now, let me choose another word for South Carolina State. Oh, we beat them last night, right?
We did.
Okay, all right.
We, we beat South Carolina, yes.
I'm just joking, God bless you.
That's what I said. I'm a winner either way we go.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Mr. Griselle.
You know, any educator has my heart and my vote, and I think that you fully understand the weighted task that is before you. And so I have no reservations whatsoever about your ability to serve, and congratulations.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Hartley?
Yes, ditto. Look, as a native of South Carolina, I was glad to see Jackson State beat South Carolina the second time.
The second time, yes.
But as, it, look, thank you for your service. As a 30-year military vet, people thank me for my service, but when I meet an educator, that's my point. Thank you for your service. I humbly bow and thank, and I see we have Dr. Green here as well. One thing I would ask, and I've just been meaning to get with Dr. Green on this, we need to make a stronger emphasis on civics in our schools. Teaching civics, how government work, democracy, the executive branch, the legislative branch, the judicial branch, the balance of power, because right now on a national scale, you know, we need to understand what's going on and what we're losing. On a local scale, a lot of our folks do not understand what city council does versus what the mayor does versus their responsibilities. So I would ask Dr. Green, if you could talk to your staff and have a bigger emphasis on the teaching of civics, the way government actually work in the Jackson Public School system. And thank you for your service, for your many years of service, and thank you for volunteering for this position.
You're very welcome.
Mr. Banks?
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Taylor, as a former member of the best band in the land, I, first of all, want to say, love the boom.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, and second of all, the works that you've done have already spoken for you. I look forward to supporting you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I ask for your prayers and your support as I take on this task, and I plan to do my very best for our children and our city.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Well, we've got one more to go. Mr. Foot?
Mr. Foot?
I appreciate your willingness to serve on the school board, and I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I echo that as well. Thank you. My husband was on the school board and served for seven years, and I know, I have some idea about how big of an undertaking this is, and it is, it is absolutely one of the most important volunteer jobs in our city and our state, and so thank you very much for being willing to do it. And welcome, Dr. Green. We're glad you're here.
Hey, ma'am. Madam President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
While we have item on the agenda, I want to thank school board member Johnson, who stepped down. I think she's done a wonderful job, and there's no question there won't be a miss in the leadership for Ward Two. Ms. Taylor do a wonderful job, her husband, working with children all the time. They love children, and that's what it takes, someone who really loves children. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Colleagues, I don't sense a need for a second round, so all in favor? It's a vote of seven zero.
I didn't mention Judge Wise is here.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Did you have?
Ms. Taylor?
Did you have family with you or friends that you would like to introduce? I'm sorry, you're going to have-
She has a husband, Barnett Taylor, Judge Wise, and I'll let her tell the other people.
Okay.
Got to put it on the record.
Ma'am, you have to come to the mic.
Yes, I have my husband with me, several friends and church members, Barnett Taylor, my church member Sandra Bell, wonderful friend Pat Wise, Mr. Willie Owens, so they're here to support me.
I'm at the chamber of all, we're all, I gotta go now.
Thank you so much, and thank you all for being here and support.
Madam President, Ms. Burbett, forgive me, I had to deal with some constituent issues. I just want to thank you for your willingness to serve. I feel like I keep cheating you, because every time you're, you're around, I have to, you know, take care of something. But, you know, one of our toughest interviewers, Dr. Omari, was thoroughly impressed, thoroughly impressed, not only with your humility, and, you know, that was important to her, but your willingness, your, your understanding of our school district and your commitment to it. So I just want to thank you personally, and please forgive me, that for whatever reason, every time you're around, I'm, I'm-
That's quite all right.
Commanded to be somewhere else.
I thank you for the opportunity.
All right, thank you. And thank you, Councilwoman Clay, for, for the recommendation.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on. Mr. Banks?
Yeah, no, Madam President, I just want to take this opportunity, time to introduce our two, welcome to the chambers, Ward Six School Board Member Cynthia Thompson as well.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Banks. Yes, thank you. Thank you both. All right, colleagues, we're going to move on now to item 18.
Order ratifying procurement and authorizing payment to N. Harris Computer Corporation for filing Form 1095C with Internal Revenue Service for the calendar year 2023.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions on this item? Hearing none, all in favor? So vote is seven zero. Item 19.
Order ratifying and authorizing payment to A Complete Flag Source Incorporated for installation and removal of Holiday Reese at City Hall.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? How did you vote?
All in favor.
Seven, zero, all right? Item 20.
Order ratifying and authorizing payment to RICO USA Inc. in the amount of $2,021.30 for the breakdown and reassemble of equipment relocated from 300 North State Street.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second on this. Any questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor?
Abstained, Madam President.
Okay. How did you vote, Mr. Hartley?
In favor, yes.
Okay. I'm having to like, look, look two ways. All right, so we had a vote of six in favor and one in extension. Mr. Stokes, all right? Item 21.
Order authorizing mayor to execute the state contract with RICO for the 60-month rental of three production copiers and accepting the quote of RICO to provide non-state contract digital multimedia press equipment manufactured by Zantay under same terms and conditions of state contract.
So moved, second.
All right, colleagues, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, colleagues. All right, it's a vote of seven zero. All right, item, item 22.
Order ratifying an improvement of invoices for goods and services from the Mississippi State University Animal Emergency and Referral Center College of Veterinary Medicine of Flowood, Mississippi, on behalf of the Jackson Police Department's K-9 Loki.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second. Colleagues, any questions or comments on this item?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, let's see, Mr. Banks, and then Mr. Stokes, and did you have your hand raised?
They probably covered it.
Okay, all right, Mr. Banks and then Mr. Stokes.
Yeah, just, just two questions. One, is this being covered through the animal control budget? And number two, where are we with the process? I think that we all voted and made sure that we set aside some money for privatization. Where are we with that process?
On the-
Name, name and title.
I'm sorry. Wendell Watts, Assistant Chief, Patrol Division. On the money for the K-9 to be paid for, that's our K-9-
money for the, uh, K-9 to be paid for, that's our, uh, K-9, uh, bomb dog, uh, it will be paid out of, uh, the, the police department's fund. Uh, now, we're still looking at the, uh, privatization, I'm not sure where we're at on that. I will have to get with, uh, Captain Jimerson and, uh, Chief Griselle, and I'll give you all that answer, though.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you, uh, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Our information showed that the issue was overheating.
Yes, sir.
Air conditioning did not work, what, how do?
Well, uh, at the time, the dog was working, uh, when this happened, and, you know, it was, um, kind of a very hot day for it, and, you know, dogs, whenever they're worked, can get overheated pretty quick.
How many dogs do we currently have?
Right now, we have four.
Now, we have a bomb dog, do they all do different things?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, we have a bomb dog, we have, uh, a narcotics dog, or two narcotics dog and a dual-purpose dog.
Okay. So do we take them into, let's, thank you, I asked, I'll, thank you.
All right. Any other questions on this matter? Hearing none, all in favor? It's a vote of seven zero. Thank you, colleagues. Item 23.
Thank you.
Order ratifying and authorizing payment of $1,620 for the past professional services performed by I.D. Tent LLC for the Jackson Fire Department service vehicles.
Somu, second.
We have a motion in a second, colleagues, any questions on this one? Mr. Banks?
Yeah, I think, uh, we need to make an amendment based on the invoices. Um, you have two invoices for 185, on the 2024 Nissan Frontier PTOA 77, uh, in the item it says 185, but the invoice reflects 375. Can someone confirm? In the order, if you look at the third one, it says 185, but the third invoice, which is invoice A557, says 375, which means that, I just want to confirm that before I make an amendment to make sure that that's right.
Uh, Willie Owens, Fire Chief, I'm not sure about that, I have to look at that again. Um, I have to talk to my Public Safety Administrator about that because I, I had no idea that was, uh, in that order.
All right, well, what, what I do, uh, colleagues, if you see, uh, if you look at invoice A557, and then if you look in the order where it says 2024 Nissan Frontier PTOA 77, same VIN number, it has 185 in the order, but the actual invoice reflects 375, just to make sure that it's correct and there's enough money, I think it'd be, uh, very safe for us to make that amendment, and if someone from the administration needs to double-check it, uh, before we vote, then, I mean, we can wait for that, but I want to make sure that this is correct.
We should pay the invoice, right?
Yeah, we, we should be paying the invoice, I just don't understand.
Do we need to just hold this item, Mr. Banks, do we need to just pull, just hold this item for a few minutes and give them a chance?
Yeah, give them a chance to look over, because I don't know if the mistake is in the invoice or the mistake is in the order.
I mean, I'm, I'm looking at it, but it is a little, it is confusing. And so, um, who made the motion on this one?
I would draw my second.
I would draw my motion.
All right, thank you, we will come back and, um, consider this one later in the meeting. Don't let me forget, colleagues. So we'll come back, and this is item 23, we will come back and reconsider before the meeting ends. If, if you can get the answer, all right? Item 24.
Order ratifying an improvement payment of $14,419.20 for past professional services performed by labor finders for the division of rental registration within the Department of Planning and Development.
Somu, second.
All right, we have a motion in a second on this item. Any questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? It's a vote of seven zero. All right. We are now going to item 25.
Order ratifying procurement of supplies from Air Gas USA LLC by the Department of Public Works Infrastructure Management Division and authorizing payment to said vendor.
Somu, second.
All right, colleagues, any questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, all in favor? It's a vote of seven zero, thank you very much. Item 26.
Order authorizing final payment to Neil Schaefer for the update to the solid waste management plan.
Somu, second.
We have a motion in a second, and we also discussed this at length in work session yesterday. Do we have any additional questions or comments?
Yes, please.
Mr. Stokes?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Wright, in layman's terms, what are we looking for in accomplishing with this item? What did Neil Schaefer do? What they getting paid for?
Yeah, Louis Wright, C.A.O., Ms. Weathers is here, and I'll ask her to come and explain exactly what that management plan consists of.
Lakeisha Weathers, solid waste. What was the question again, I'm sorry?
The management plan was.
We're living in your amendment.
What Neil Schaefer getting paid for?
Okay, they helped us with, uh, formulating the documents, um, they helped us with the planning and development with, um, um, Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality, they set up the documents for us to do the advertisement, the, uh, upcoming, uh, public hearing, they helped us create the document itself.
And the documents will be, will be associated with what? What are we accomplishing?
It's the solid waste management plan, it's the plan for the city of Jackson that.
Go ahead.
It's, it's the plan for the city of Jackson that fully details all of the programs that are associated with collection, with disposal, with the programs for solid waste collection, uh, the education pieces, it's everything that's involved with solid waste.
That must be sent to the state.
M.D.Q.
M.D.Q., yes, sir.
Yeah.
Mississippi, yes, sir, and that the plan is available here for view.
So what we doing, we're making sure we follow state law?
Yes.
Thank you.
Compliance.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. All right, Mr. Hartley and then Mr. Banks. Okay, all right.
Okay, um, and, and again, uh, what are some of the, a couple of questions, what are some of the, uh, uh, changes, if any, in the solid waste, in the city's solid waste management plan? That's one question, and the other is, how are we getting all this information out to the public for review? What step in the process are we at now?
Okay, so everything changed in the plan, um, as I stated, the plan was last updated or approved in 1996. So we have not had an approved plan, um, since 1996, so everything has changed in that document, from the company that we're utilizing for, uh, debris collection, the, um, landfill process and procedure, the amounts that we're charging, um, the programs that we have, uh, that we're involved in for education, for everything in the plan has changed. Um, the steps in the process currently, we have advertised for the public hearing, um, so that is, as you know, the final step prior to approval. The public hearing, uh, will be on April the, April the 12th, if I'm not mistaken, it's on a Tuesday, I don't have the calendar in front of me, but, um, that's, uh, coming up in a couple of weeks. There is a plan here for public viewing, um, it's located in the city clerk's office, so if they want to come see it prior to that meeting, they can.
Is there an electronic version where folks can go out on, online and look it up?
We do not have an electronic link, um, if you are asking for that, I will ask M.D.Q. if that's available.
Please, uh, because, uh, you know, this is one of the big priorities within our city.
It is a very big priority.
And, and we need everyone to be able to look at it, you know, feasibility of its working, and I appreciate everything Neil Schaefer doing, but we need to, we need the public to have as much information as possible.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate a link to that.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley. Uh, Councilwoman Clay?
Uh, yes, I have a question. In this, um, Exhibit D, the schedule work is from 2021, is that just an example in here, or is that what we really use?
No, ma'am, we've been working on this plan since 2021. Um, we had some delays in finalizing the project because, uh, M.D.Q. lost some staffing, and they were delayed in reviewing, so this is the final, they, uh, I think we sent them the plan in 2022, and they're just not sending us back their revisions in 2024. So that's why this is saying the final payment to Neil Schaefer, we're finalizing the project now. We've been working on this for three years.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, any other questions, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? It's a vote of seven zero. Thank you, colleagues. All right, item 27.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with New Way Mississippi Inc. for litter removal from public right-of-waste in the city of Jackson.
Somu, second.
Uh, we have a motion in a second, any questions or comments on this item?
Question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
Um, the current con- contract that they're under, when will it expire?
That contract expired, uh, February, uh, at the end of February.
Now, this contract would be for how long?
This contract will be for 12 months with an option to extend.
Now, legal, a 12-month contract at this stage, is it enforceable under a new council? Do we need attorney general's opinion?
Drew Martin, City Attorney, so generally speaking, any of the contracts the city enters into or board will buy a successor board or council or governing authority.
Oh, take your time, take your time.
Generally can be set aside by a subsequent elected, uh.
It can be what now?
Can be set aside by a subsequent city council, uh, and administration.
New council can set aside?
Yes, sir.
All right. I just wanted to get it on record. All right, thank you.
Yes.
So why are we voting on this if that could happen?
Well, the short answer to that is that the council has to approve any contract, uh, in order for it to take effect.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Mayor and then Mr. Foot.
Yeah, I just want to give some background, uh, New Way has not only been a contract that has augmented, uh, our litter pickup, uh, for several years now, I, I want to give you some information as to who New Way is. New Way is an organization that works in partnership with M.D.O.C., uh, that is workforce development, uh, they use formerly incarcerated individuals, they are an actual partner of Mississippi Department of Corrections that uses formerly incarcerated individuals, uh, and finds workforce, uh, work opportunities for them. Uh, so this not only achieves helping to clean our city up, it helps, uh, returning citizens find employment, uh, and keep them on a more, uh, productive path.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Madam President.
Well, Mr. We had, Mr. Foot and then Mr. Hartley, and then I'll come back to you, Mr. Stokes.
All right.
Mr. Foot?
Yes, is, is Mr. Perry here? Okay, so the, um, I just want to make sure I understand the, the drill here, that this is for the rights of waves of streets throughout the city, and you got two fully-equipped crews of seven workers and then one supervisor for each crew. The, so how long does it take them to do, make one, you know, pass at all the right-of-wastes? Is that something that takes a full month, or does it take a week to, and so I'm trying to get that handle on when I could expect to see them in Ward One? And, and is it just gonna be along the interstate? Where's, where are they gonna be picking up litter? I've got litter all over Ward One that needs to be picked up. Can you give me some, some, uh, sort of, an overview of how this process works for their two crews?
Yes, sir. Well, they're out daily picking up, um, you're asking how long does it take, depends on how much litter is on the ground. Um, in a day's time, they can pick up up to two to three miles, um, in a day's time, so they can complete the list in a week's time, uh, it just depends on the amount of debris that's in the area.
How many, so what are the miles of right-of-way roads in Jackson?
286 miles.
286, well, that's gonna take longer than a week if you've got, if you're two or three miles a day.
Well, you asked me how, I mean, seriously.
What's that?
You're asking of how long does it take that crew to work? I'm answering your question, it takes them that long to complete that many miles in a day's time. Now, if you're asking can they cover the whole city in a week, no, sir, they cannot cover the whole city in a week's time. So they work a- area-based, it's area-based, okay? We try to move them around the ward.
There's some kind of schedule we can, we can see, so we know, when we know to expect them to come through Ward One?
Yes, sir, the schedule will be provided to Ms. Payne, she will distribute it publicly, whether it's online, um, on the city's website, we will post it publicly, it will be posted.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, um, Mr. Hartley and then Mr. Stokes and then.
I just want to say something about the schedule.
Okay, all right.
Uh, Lakeisha, if, if the schedule, in addition to sending it to Ms. Payne, if it could be sent directly to the council.
No problem.
Uh, as well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Hartley?
Yes, and I, I had one question for Ms. Weathers and then another one for Legal. Uh, with Ms. Weathers, uh, do they, they turn in a report, is it required under this contract, that they turn in a report of their activities and the, and the roads covered?
They turn in the list that's provided to them as completed.
I'm sorry?
They turn in the list that's provided to them as completed, we go behind them and check and verify that information.
Okay, because I'm, I'm interested, I, I really haven't seen them in my ward either, uh, and I know we have litter everywhere.
We do.
Uh, but, um, I'd like to see more about the results. Yesterday, we spoke about how, um, uh, how complete this is, and, you know, a lot of times, the problem is education of our folks, uh, and so, um, I'm, I'm, I'm interested in that. And the other question is for Legal, where'd Legal disappear to? Uh, Mr. Martin? Uh, Mr. Martin?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I had a question for you. Yesterday, it was brought up in city, in the, uh, planning meeting that, uh, this did not require RFP, which opens up an, another question, uh, that, that's, that's going to be out there. I think we need to, we need to get a better understanding, and not now, but if you could maybe put something in writing as to what exactly requires an RFP and what doesn't.
Sure.
Uh, because, you know, it's a little, getting a little hazy now, okay, as to, you know, because, but we need competitiveness when we're looking at doing the work around the city of Jackson, and we need the, the best people that can do it. So if you don't mind.
Sure, no, I can do that.
Yeah.
I've got those readily available for you.
Okay, and pass it along to the city council as to which items we need an RFP for, which ones we don't, because I would just assume when we're paying, uh, $400,000, that an RFP would be required, but apparently that's not the case here.
Drew, if I.
I'll get it for you.
All right, I'll go ahead, um, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, I believe that the council has, uh, in our procurement work, there's an ordinance that, that is being proposed, and there's work regarding that. Uh, I mean, we pay engineering firms all the time, far more than $400,000, and that does not require an RFP either, uh, but we are, uh, there's information that we've been trying to work with the council after our work with, uh, Brent Westegren, uh, to get passed, I don't know where that is in the stage or the process.
I think it passed.
It did, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
And that spoke to the procurement practices, uh, with the city.
And again, I, I think the people would be better served, if, if we knew, and we, we represent the people, if we knew exactly what cases are gonna come up, whether an RFP, whether we need to look for an RFP or not, uh, and, uh, this was just kind of surprising that, okay, uh, while we, we don't want to discourage people going back in, in, um, employment and all, we have to weigh against effectiveness, okay? And so that's, that's what I'm looking at, so if you could, don't mind, just prepare something simple.
I will do it.
And I'll send it out to all my folks, so they'll know as well.
Sounds good, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Stokes and then Mr. Foot?
Thank you. Madam President, my concern is simple. I had a call from Mr. Hunnysucker on yesterday concerning Holmes Avenue and Tool Street. Mattress trash and everything else been dumped there for months. No one's been able to pick it up. Now, this company, I saw them doing Martin King, they were picking up. I said something at the council meeting.
I remember.
But we must give other companies and businesses opportunities to do work and make money in Jackson and through the city of Jackson. You know, from what I'm seeing in the paperwork, this company is headquartered out of original Mississippi. The point is this. We are a couple of weeks away from election. We're like days, not even sixty days away from something's changing. Why are we moving swiftly on this item when we could simply hold this item, put in community, let's get some AG's opinions and make sure we give other people a chance to do work with the city? That's the biggest complaint we get. We don't do work with the city. We can't do work. We get all these excuses. This $400,000 that's going to be spent and we're saying, yeah, we're getting people from, who've done something wrong. What about the people who are doing the right thing? Why can't they do work with the city of Jackson? $400,000 is a lot of money. So again, I'm voting no on this item. I think it's important that we give other people a chance to do work in the city of Jackson, make some money. Thank you.
Mr. Foot and then Mr. Banks?
Thank you. I'd just like to say that even if the RFP isn't officially required, it's still a best practices to ask, get competitive bidding on an item like this. And I just, I'm disappointed that we didn't get competitive bids.
Thank, Mr. Banks?
Yeah, I just, two things. One, we have used this company just about ever since I've been on the council. One of the main reasons we did use this company is because of their unique opportunity that they provide for people who need a second chance or third chance. The other thing is because they're, you know, there's really no competitive cycle when you talk about a company that offers what New Way offers. The other thing is why do it right now? It's because people are still throwing chicken boxes out the window and it got to be picked up, you know? And there's not enough community organizations to keep up with the pace of wire people litter. And so the contract has expired. I mean, if you all are fine with saying that you want to lapse for a month, two months or three months without stuff being picked up, that's you. But for the people that stay in South Jackson, we want stuff being able to be picked up and we want to make sure that we're providing work for people, you know? I have seen no other company, and I'm sure others can verify, that offer the same opportunities, especially for second chance, and that ban the box as New Way does. And I rest with that. And Madam President, I call the question.
All right, the question's been called.
Unreadiness, Madam President?
Unreadiness?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
President?
I just mentioned, Madam President, that we have streets that nothing is being picked up on. To sit here and say today in this council chamber that we're going to pick up chicken bones and everything else is a lie.
Madam President, the question's been called.
They're not picking up trash.
The gentleman to my right has spoken over three times in our ordinance. Question's been called.
Mr. Stokes?
Well, they got to tell the truth.
Mr. Stokes, I appreciate your comments, thank you. But the question has been called. All in favor? Opposed? Carrie's with a vote of four-three.
Madam President?
Yes?
Our, if you don't mind, our six A state champs for ladies basketball, they're in the chambers and I ask that we go ahead and take up item forty-three, please.
I am very happy to do that. We're so glad you're here, thank you. Clerk, would you please?
I really don't want to. I mean, there's seats for everybody and they know that they're waiting until lunch. So, I mean, if we do it now, where are they going to go after this? They got to get back to testing. Okay? We got testing. Okay, if they got to go back.
I'm happy to go ahead and take them. And we're so glad you're here with us today. Mr. Mayor, did you, I'm sorry, you interrupted.
Yes, y'all can go ahead.
All right.
They knew they were going to lunch at twelve.
Okay, what time is it?
We should be finished by twelve, that's an hour. I mean, you can do what you want.
Yeah.
Education is, I'm going to make a comment. Education is most important, but they knew they were going to lunch at twelve when they came. So I think we should be finished by twelve and if we are not, we'll stop where we are at twelve, recognize them and we'll leave for lunch, if that's okay with the council.
That is, that is, I really have no strong opinion about this either way. So, Mr. Griselle, I hear what you're saying about they're getting back to school, but if they're not going back to school anyway?
They got to go back.
No, they're going to lunch.
They're going to lunch.
Let me just talk to you for a minute.
All right, we'll take up the next item and you come, you come back and tell me where we're headed in just about a minute. Hopefully the next, hopefully the next item won't take very long. Clerk, item twenty-eight.
Well, I go to lunch with them.
Me, me too. All right, item twenty-eight, clerk.
Resolution rejecting the counteroffer of Thin Brothers LLC and authorizing the city's counteroffer to acquire certain property project parcel number 001-00-00-W tax parcel number 706-154, Thin Brothers LLC for the Beasley Road at Highland Drive Improvements Federal Project Number STP 8254-00004, LPA 108284.
So move, second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments?
Question?
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you. We're rejecting the counteroffer, legal?
Yes, sir, the number is still well above, I'm sorry.
We need this property kind of badly. You sure you want to reject it? They're going to send us through a time.
There's a time issue that is, Drew Martin, City Attorney, there is a time issue that is important here, but the numbers are still far enough apart that we have other options available if they won't take a reasonable offer.
All right, no problem.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Any other questions on this item? Hearing none, all in favor?
Abstaining.
Okay, so you voted for it?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Foot, Councilwoman Clay abstaining. All right, so we've got two abstentions. Did you get that? And? And then five voted for it, thank you. All right, all right, what did y'all decide about this?
We're going, they're going to stay to twelve. At twelve, we'll recognize them if we not finish and we'll leave.
Okay.
We got to go to twelve.
Okay. All right.
So y'all taking me to eat too?
Colleagues, let's try to get through the rest of the agenda.
Let's get through, I'm a whole mile, I'm going to eat with them.
All right, item, item twenty-nine.
Order ratifying and authorizing the petty cash fund for the office of the city attorney for 2024-2025 fiscal year.
So move, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? How did you, I couldn't see. Okay, seven, zero. All right, is that right? Seven, zero. All right, item thirty.
Order amended the November 5th, 2024 order authorizing payment for additional legal fees to reflect the correct legal entity slaughter in Willingham P L L C.
So move, second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions, colleagues? It's pretty straightforward. Hearing none, all in favor? It's voted seven, zero. Item thirty?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one.
Order amended the July 30th, 2024 order authorizing the mayor to renew and execute a rental agreement with Pitney Bowls Inc. to authorize payment to Pitney Bowls Global Financial Services LLC.
So move, second.
All right, any questions or comments on this item, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? It's voted seven, zero. Item thirty-two.
Order authorizing the city of Jackson to retain Springer Law Office P L L C by and through counsel Francis Springer Esquire to provide legal counsel for the former Jackson Police Department Officer Rebecca Lomax in the matter of Dara Norwood et al. versus City of Jackson et al. Civil action number 23-603-EFP.
So move, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on this one, colleagues?
I have a question, but I can hold it abstaining, Madam President. I was trying to get the facts.
Can we talk about this in open session? We are going to have to go into executive session, I understand. Generally speaking, okay, he just wants the basic facts.
Yeah.
Sharon Carr, Special Assistant to the City Attorney Litigation Division. Generally, the facts involve a former Jackson police officer responding to a call as a taser incident. That's as generic as I can get on the record.
Former, no longer police officer?
Right.
Responded to, what, I didn't hear you?
Responded to a domestic call and the case involves the use of a taser.
Domestic, okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Did you, how'd you get it?
I voted for you.
Okay, so we have Mr. Stokes abstaining and six in favor. All right, colleagues, the chief is ready for us to consider item twenty-three. Let's go back and get that item out of the way. Clerk, would you please get the item on the floor?
Order ratifying and authorizing the payment of $1,620 for the past professional services performed by Ido Tent LLC for the Jackson Fire Department service vehicles.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item, colleagues? Any questions? We're going to explain it to, you know, see, let's get this straight, is what I guess I need to say.
Sharon Timms, Deputy CFO. There is going to be a need to be an amendment. It's going to be the third line under the whereas Wenda Tent was placed on the following vehicles. The 2024 Nissan Frontier PT 877. That amount is 375, not 185.
Madam President, so move according to the statement of the Deputy CFO.
Okay, we have a motion. Mr. Stokes, did the second already. So, all in favor of the amendment as proposed? All right, we now have, it's a vote of seven, zero. We now have the item before us as amended. Any additional questions or comments? Mr. Stokes?
Chief, item I'm trying to get on the agenda as close to this is the training of our firemen and not being able to certify through the city of Jackson. It's my understanding that some good firemen are being let go. And the thing about fighting fire in Jackson is that I've been a member of the Heinz County Board of Supervisors and they have that, I don't know what you call it, when you got to call firemen. They got to come, by the time they come, the house is burnt down. We have urban firefighters who fight fires and then come back. Why do we not certify our own firemen like we used to?
Yeah.
Because we need them to be properly trained in urban firefighting versus in the volunteer fire department.
Yeah, okay, so, Councilman Stokes, we were able to certify our own firefighters at one point, but the state took that over. And when they did, they have two national certifications that you are able to receive in order to certify a firefighter in the United States. One of them is called a ProBoi and the other one is called IFSA. Now, at first, the state did not have but one of those certifications. So we were looking at this several years ago and found out that if we could get the other certification, then we were able to go back and recertify, and certify our own people again. And the state jumped and they got both certifications now. So therefore, we, no, no other city in the state of Mississippi is able to certify their own firefighters except the State Fire Academy.
Why, why we, why the city of Jackson did not challenge this?
I have no idea because I, I wasn't here at the time that happened, but I don't know why. I do know that we have talked with some state legislatures about this and I think it's going to have to go through them in order for this to be changed, if it can be changed. But that's...
Course can change.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. And, yeah, this is a little off topic, but so if you, do you, did you get all the information you needed?
Yeah, I have a couple.
All right, all right, any other questions about the item before us? Yes, Councilwoman Clay?
So that means we're going to increase the bottom line of the amount we're paying?
No, it's still...
The adding is still right?
That isn't, that's the correct amount. It's just invoices didn't add up.
Okay.
All right, so any other questions on this item? Thank you, Mr. Banks, for catching this. All in favor? All right, Carrie's with a vote of seven, zero. All right, colleagues, we are now going back to item thirty-three.
Resolution of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi in support of the sixth annual South Jackson Festival and Parade.
So move, second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Griselle, this is your item. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Madam President. Everybody, this is the sixth annual South Jackson Festival and Parade. It has grown tremendously every year and I take great delight in helping to sponsor this event. And personally, I'm extending a personal invitation to our six A state lady basketball champs to please put a trailer or float a truck, Rev Sutton, make it happen, please. You going to put, you going to put Callaway over in Forest Hill region?
Whoa!
Yes, because they represent the state. You know what, it's all right, since Rev Sutton went to Forest Hill, it'll be all right. But they represent the state. These ladies represent the state. And you're going to see their trophy in just a second. Okay.
Get back on topic. Get back on topic.
Thank you. So again, this parade and festival will be April 25th. It will be a day of festivities and it will give me great pleasure to highlight our state champions on this day. So colleagues, I ask for your full support. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, just briefly, I'd just like to say how much I appreciate the effort that went into this. I watched y'all from the very first one to what it's grown to be now and it's become a staple in the city and residents in South Jackson truly appreciate it. And it's really more than a parade, it really becomes a festival. So I'm grateful for that.
Great, all right, thank you. All right, all in favor? It's a vote of seven, zero. Item thirty-four.
Resolution of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi supporting a requirement of security personnel at businesses located near schools.
So move, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on this. Mr. Stokes?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, it's, it's, children must be our priority. We must make sure that we do any and everything in our power to protect children. There's a video going around the city of Jackson where, I don't know if it was at the game or what, but some of the Callaway students left the campus and went across the street to the store. And ladies girls, young women were fighting. The owner of the store did not do what I think should have been done to safeguard the safety of our children. We cannot allow businesses to make money, operate near schools, but do not provide safety for the children. That's absolutely wrong. Now, we've all been kids and sometimes children will fight, but the store owner must take it within their authority with security and other means to make sure the fights are stopped. That could escalate to someone getting shot, killed or anything and they're only children. So this is a matter that we're going to try to make sure if you have a business near a school, you got to put the children first.
Thank you, Mr. ...
For us to make sure they safe.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Stokes, I would imagine that at some point, if the effort is, is agreed upon, that this would come in the form of an ordinance. But I guess my, my question is, could we be more specific? When we say business like a law firm, are we expecting, when you say businesses next to a school, that's a pretty broad, you know?
Well, if we have to give distance because they asked about distance, what I did with Linia, when we had problems with a store by a school, we worked with everyone in the city and everyone else. We purchased the property and we made a parking for the school. This store near Callaway is getting more and more out of control. Children are leaving Callaway, going over to the store and fighting and they're putting it on Facebook and other things. These are children. We got to make sure they are protected. They are making money at this store, a lot of money. So they can't take some of that money and put it back to security or some other manner to make sure that these children are safe. And they must do it. We must not allow people to make money on the back of our children, but do not provide safety.
Thank you, Mr. Banks?
Yeah, I, I just want to say to my colleague, I agree wholeheartedly with this ordinance and I take it fit's hand in hand with the proposed introduction ordinance that Mr. Hardy proposed that deals with the connectivity between Jackson Police Department and security. But I, I think the question before is, Councilman Stokes, in this ordinance, it just says security personnel at businesses, which means that if there's a law firm or if there's a church, which is a business next to their school, are they going to be required to have security? Or did you want to just be more specific and say convenience stores and/or restaurants, et cetera?
Well, I brought it as a resolution because I think the fight happened a couple of weeks ago. But we would get to legal to make sure we can draw up the ordinance itself. And there, make sure we put all the nuts and bolts and making sure we follow all the laws that need to be followed. But we need to send message to these businesses, not just at Callaway, but in the business near these schools, these children got to come first. They must be protected and we must have made sure we have safety as the primary issue. They saw kids coming over there fighting, children fight. So why didn't they do something to stop it at that point? Well, to call the police, do something. Don't let it get out of control. They were kicking girls down. If you haven't seen the video, you know, I'm, I know I do less technology than anybody. It's on, it's on, you can use technology and see it.
You saw it on your flip phone? You saw it on your flip phone? I got that phone now, you know, BJ. Moving on up.
All right, let's get back on topic. All right, Mr. Stokes, thank you for this. Any other comments or questions, colleagues? Hearing none, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Griselle?
I'll be real quick. I actually support this resolution. The store across from Callaway, the store across from Forest Hill have been problematic for a long time. And those stores in particular need security to not only help safeguard all patrons, but also to make sure... but also to make sure that the students that are coming there from the school are being, uh, protected also.
Yeah, ju- just briefly, I, I agree. Uh, that's why I wanted more understanding of what Councilman Stokes was trying to do. I went to Callaway, right? So, I know the store that everybody goes across the street to, has been for several generations. Uh, in fact, you know, uh, I know that they're actually starting to venture down to the other store a little more too, right? Uh, so I, I, I just wanted more clarity in this. This isn't in the form of an ordinance right now, it's just a resolution.
Right.
But when we get to the point of an ordinance, I think we just need to be more clear. And, you know, for that matter, you know, not just by schools, we need to, I don't, I know that there are restrictions on what we can require, you know, per state law. But we need to find the space that we're requiring security at all of these gas stations, uh, you know? People are afraid to get gas and it's, you know, it's, these gas stations are havens for activity and we need to make certain that they are required to have security. The police department can't be at every gas station.
Thank you, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Stokes, for putting this on the agenda. Colleagues, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero, item thirty-five.
Order authorizing the mayor to extend a contract with Ice Miller Strategies LLC to continue to provide lobbying service to the city of Jackson.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item, colleagues, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Uh, abstain, Madam President.
Okay, uh, opposed? All right, so we have, uh, one in opposition, Mr. Foot, Mr. Stokes is abstaining and everyone else is in favor. All right, thank you. All right, before we go to the discussion items, though, we are gonna take up item forty-three. Um, Clark, would you please get that item on the floor?
Resolution of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi honoring and commending the Callaway High School Girls Basketball Team upon winning the 2025 six A Girls Basketball State Championship.
So move. I'm sorry, I was ready, so move.
Oh, we don't have to, oh, that's right, we're not voting on this.
Oh, it's a resolution, my bad.
This is just an honorary. Well, we wanted to vote on it.
Yeah.
We were ready.
You honorable.
I bet it would have been seven zero. I mean, we were ready. Okay, so anyway, um, who's item is this?
Ms. Clay.
Ms. Clay, would you please introduce this item, please?
Um, this time I would like to, uh, recognize the Callaway Girls, um, Basketball Team for winning the six A State Championship. We want to thank the coach and all the team members for all you do for the city and the example of leadership you're showing in sportsmanship and keep up the good work.
Amen.
Okay, all right, well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yep, please introduce.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
The mayor also has a proclamation.
Y'all know I couldn't miss this opportunity, uh, with Callaway winning the championship. And, uh, I appreciate your recognition, uh, that Reverend Sutton, um, went to Forest Hill, uh, but his daughter coaches at Callaway because every parent wants better for their child.
Whoa.
That part, that part, that part, that part, that part.
Okay.
I, I'll tell you again-
That part.
Yeah, y'all come on up and-
Let me-
Line up across the front, uh, y'all, y'all, if the, if the, if the team members, and welcome, please just line up across the front of the council.
Y'all know I can dunk, don't you?
It's all right.
Y'all know I can dunk, right?
You, you can whip?
She started laughing like I can't get off the ground.
I moved that, uh, Kenny Stokes tried to dunk on me.
Mr. Mayor, would you please continue?
Yes, um, I'm gonna read this proclamation. Proclamation in honor of Callaway Girls Basketball State Champions.
Madam Chair.
Whereas the city of Jackson makes it a point to celebrate the exceptional work and commitment to excellence that those in our community who represent and make the city a much better place from where they stand. And whereas the city appreciates and honors the discipline, focus, and teamwork it takes to en- engage in competitive sports and to, and the encouragement of the coaching staff that inspires all individual athletes to excel. Whereas Callaway High School Girls Basketball Coach Ashley Sutton has served as coach for the Lady Chargers for the past four seasons, where they have earned an impressive twenty-seven and seven record. And whereas Coach Sutton earned a state runner-up finish in her first three years as coach and was recognized as Mississippi Scoreboard Metro Jackson Coach of the Year two years ago. And whereas the Lady Chargers have compiled an impressive seventy-nine and nineteen record under Coach Sutton's tutelage, resulting in an eighty-six, I mean, in an eighty-point-six winning percentage. And whereas the Lady Chargers have displayed an extraordinary sense of determination, hard work, and discipline, providing their ability, proving, uh, their ability to compete with any team, not just in Metro Jackson, but across the state. And whereas the city of Jackson is extremely proud to say that these talented young women captured the 2024-2025 Mississippi High School Athletic Association Class Six A Championship, bringing home the title and trophy, trophy to the, the capital city. And whereas, under Coach Sutton, Callaway became the first JPS Girls Team to win a state title since Coach Tangela Banks led Murrah High School to a s- a state crown in 2016. And whereas this exceptional team and coaching staff finished the season ranked ninth in the state by max prep, uh, with a thirty and three record, I'm sure that was nationally, not, not statewide, thirty and three record, having won their last fifteen games. This victory is a triumph for the entire Jackson Public School community and the city of Jackson. Now, therefore, I, Shokue Antarlamumba, Mayor of the City of Jackson, do hereby congratulate Coach Sutton and the Lady Chargers for their athletic excellence and embrace, uh, embrace, uh, of one another to accomplish this greatest goal of the all-state, uh, I'm sorry, all-six A's championship. The city of Jackson is extremely proud of your accomplishments that shine as a bright light to our city, given under my hand and seal of the City of Jackson, Mississippi, this eighteenth day of March, 2025. Congratulations, ladies. To Councilman, Councilman Stokes, uh, I do want to remind you that eight-three-three was in the tournament. Uh, it was just six-oh-one, uh, Beasley Road that, that took home the crown, all right? We are extremely proud of you, ladies, uh, Coach Sutton, where, I'm sorry. I always miss you because you always look like one of the, the, one of the, the students, right? Uh, we're extremely proud of your accomplishments, uh, your hard work. Uh, not only this championship, but the fact that you have now a, a history of success speaks volumes of, of the coach that you are, uh, that you, what you sow into these young ladies. So, thank you very much, thank you, all right. How do y'all want to organize this picture?
Yes, I am a graduate from Forest Hill.
Resolution of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi honoring and commending the Callaway High School Girls Basketball Team from winning the 2025 six-eight Girls, six A Girls Basketball State Championship. Whereas a championship in competitive sports require a combination of athletic talent, rigorous practice, and unwavering tenacity nurtured by exceptional coaching and strategic planning. And whereas Ca- Coach Ashley Sutton has served as the head coach for the Callaway High School Girls Basketball Program for the past pers- four seasons. Under her leadership, the Lady Chargers achieved a remarkable twenty-seven-seven record and earned a state runner-up finish, earning recognition as the Mississippi Scoreboard Metro Jackson Coach of the Year two years ago. Over the past three seasons, Coach Sutton has compiled a seventy-nine-nineteen record, resulting in an impressive eighty-point-six winning percentage. And whereas the Lady Chargers have displayed an ordinary sense of determination, hard work, and discipline, proving their ability to compete with any team, not just in Metro Jackson, but across the entire state. These talented young women have captured the 2024-2025 Mississippi High School Athletic Association Class Six A State Championship, bringing home the title and trophy. And whereas the Lady Chargers finished the season ranked number nine in Mississippi by max prep with a thirty-three record, having won their last fifteen games, this victory is a triumph for the entire Jackson Public Schools community. Be it thereby resolved that the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi takes great pride in congratulating the Callaway High School Girls Basketball Team on their outstanding achievement as the six A State Champion, Champions and hereby extend a high commendation to the entire team and coaching staff, done this eighteenth day of March, 2025.
My, I'd like to propose to the city council, I know y'all are over street naming, we just want to change Beasley Road to Championship Drive if we could. Can we do that? Uh, we're gonna, uh, I'm gonna get back there with them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, everyone, did it, did we get a photo? Okay, good. Okay. Which way you wanna go? Just come, come here.
It's so hot in here.
It is so hot. I'm dying. Okay, thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Congratulations, ladies. Thank you, thank you, everybody, and congratulations, ladies, we're so proud of you, thank you.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
And then, after- I just want to say, you know, these ladies, we, we're gonna hear from Coach Sutton. Uh, these ladies, I'm really proud because these ladies are homegrown. They came in with Coach Sutton and she created what she got from when they were in ninth grade. A lot of these young ladies are seniors, they're athletes, but they're also scholar athletes. And they have very high GPAs. And we know that basketball takes up a lot of time, a lot of weekends, a lot of time they could be spending studying and doing other stuff, but they're maintaining. And I'm really proud of them and I'm really happy that they are representing the state of Mississippi, thank you.
Thank you, um, Coach, oh wait, Mr. Banks, did you want to say something first?
Uh, yeah, let, let me say something first and then, uh, Coach will come, because I'm gonna give some time to her daddy real quick. Uh, I just want to say, congratulations. You know, at one point in watching you, I thought you was gonna end up in the boom because of the way you used to play drums at the church and everything. Yeah, but, but you know, it's just, it's just good to see and to watch your trajectory. And, and I know that Callaway's not gonna be your last stop, you know, get all the championships, but hopefully you can end up at Marlow College Home, uh, yeah. Yeah, but no, congratulations to all of you all. And I just want to yield, uh, two minutes of my time to my big brother, uh, Arthur Sutton.
Amen.
Yeah.
I don't know about two minutes, I don't know about two minutes.
I, I just want to say, I want to thank all of you for what you have done for the betterment of these children. I don't take children lightly. Anytime you can take out of your schedule and honor them, feed them, it's my heart desire for what you do and it means a whole lot. This is my wife, what's that up, baby?
That's right, that's right, introduce the wife.
And this is, uh, this is our knee, baby. And the only thing that I wish my dad was a coach and won everything in Jackson.
Come on now.
Football, basketball, track, he did it all. If you want to upset me, you mess with one of these girls or these coaches. If you want to upset me, say something negative about the young folks because I believe that all young people have a chance.
That's right.
Now, I'm a progressive, I'm a preacher, but the Lord is still working on me.
All right.
And so I thank y'all for what you have done and I appreciate for what you have done and we, we salute our daughter for doing this and these young ladies.
All right, let me say one thing, JoJo, what, JoJo, stand up, JoJo, what's she?
You tell me.
Tell it.
You come on, tell me.
Tell it.
Also, I do want to thank you all for inviting us here. We, uh, do not take it lightly, we are very grateful. Um, we tell everybody all the time, it's not just for Callaway, this is not just for Jackson Public Schools, this is really for the city. And so, we're glad that we could get the job done for you all. Um, he was talking about Johanna, um, Johanna was, she's seventeen hundred points, um, five hundred rebounds, five hundred assists, two times district MVP, two times, uh, district Offensive Player of the Year, uh, multiple time, uh, Player of the Week, um, what else I'm missing? Two, oh, the most important thing, two-time Danny Does and it's the top twelve, um, players in the state of Mississippi. And she has been the only one from Jackson, um, girls and boys, um, since we've been here at Callaway. And so that's something that's very exceptional and, um, yeah. Yeah, she was also MVP of the state championship game. And one thing, one thing I love about Johanna, yeah, she was also in the Mississippi-Alabama All-Star Game. She got MVP for that as well. Uh, her junior year, she was in the Mississippi Sports Medicine All-Star Game. This is a lot to keep up with. Um, but one thing I love about Johanna is she does not take the credit herself. She gives it to God foremost as well as us. And then she gives it to her teammates and her coaches and I think that's just what makes a player very complete. And so, once again, we want to thank you all and like Mr. Griselle said, these are not just basketball players, I have plenty of players that have scored twenty-plus on the ACT. I have Deja stand up, where you at now, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-eight? She takes the ACT tomorrow, we're looking for a thirty. All four of my seniors will have full rides to college and it's been that way, um, since we, since I've been at Callaway. I've had a hundred percent graduation rate. We have, if you had proficient or advanced on interstate tests, raise your hand.
Amen.
It's a lot of them. And then I have some, I think Deja, Shelby, they had the highest score in the district for the state test. I myself am an Algebra I teacher, my assistant coach, who used to be an Algebra I teacher, and we have the highest scores in the state as well. So it's more than just basketball, it's more than a game here. And then Coach, uh, Larry Wilson, he does a lot, he, um, I, I can tell you, he's probably the highest boy or representative, as much as he take my money and everybody else's, but we're just really grateful to be here and then we thank you all.
Amen.
Oh, and I, and I definitely have to say thank you to my principal, uh, Dr. Shamika McLown. And my superintendent, um, Dr. Green, and everybody else I might have forgotten, I'm sorry.
Great, thank you. Colleagues, thank, this was really very special today. What a, this helps us all remember while we get up and do this work every day.
It's time to go eat now.
Madam President.
Yeah, Ms., uh, Ms., uh, Councilman Griselle.
I know we gotta go, but I just want to, you know, Coach Sutton acknowledged Mr. Wilson, but Mr. Wilson is also Johanna's dad. And wherever she go, he's there too. You know, and it takes a lot, especially when you have a father who is running up and down the road, state to state, uh, you know, competition, competition behind the daughter, so congratulations to you two.
And the valedictorian of Callaway, um, for this school year is gonna be Deja Grandison, I gotta give it up to her again. And then-
Well, and I've, so, but I do want to pause-
Oh, and she got the Scholar-Athlete Award for this academic scholarship, oh yeah, Tuskegee Full Ride, Nate has a full ride, Johanna has a full ride. So, it's, it's really more, we're doing more than just winning on, uh, six-oh-one Beasley. We're not the ones fighting, but we're the ones in the gym working. And then, uh, lastly, uh, Alicia Cook, she was the valedictorian last year at her middle school. So, you know, it's greatness.
This is very inspiring and we, and I want to also pause and say thank you, Councilwoman Clay, for putting this on the agenda and bringing these amazing young women before us today and for all the people who support them and thank you very much.
Amen.
And I hope you enjoy lunch.
Oh, yes, they love to eat.
Me too.
All right, colleagues, we're gonna move on now, um, after that very uplifting presentation. We have, uh, several discussion items before us. Mr. Stokes, thirty-six is yours.
Madam President, I told Councilwoman Lee, I'm gonna hold my item so I could go to eat with them, but we have a building that's scheduled to be torn down on Marlowt King Jr. Drive. It's historic and I'm just hoping that we can hold off. I, I don't know which division where they put the numbers on the building, but it's on the corner of Randall and Marlowt King Jr. Drive, it's the old Grisham Store. It's the old Grisham store for all the children who went to Linnia. In old, old days, Ms. Grisham used to let you come in there, and she'll feed you, and it's, it's more historic than anything else. I, I would rather hold it. Josh, okay, to the next one.
Yeah, Dr. Amori.
Okay, um, that, there's a plan for that, that they've worked out with, um, the owner, and I'm blanking on her name right now. But the, the walls will remain, but on the inside of the walls, there will be a green space, so it's not like your, uh, traditional demolition. Like the signage and all of that will, will be there. They're, they're very proud of that family legacy.
Okay, and that's where former mayor Chuck Waylon Mumba, the daddy, used to coach those kids, you know, just like they doing now. So, again, I'm gonna hold my other item, Madam President, some homeless people going in the house on steelwood, but I bring that up at the next meeting, uh, again. Thank you so much.
And that's just in a week, Mr. Stokes.
Yes, I'll be ready. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Um, Mr. Hartley, item thirty-eight.
Yes, that was concerning road and lane striping. Uh, I don't see anyone here from Public Works or Mr. Wright, is there anyone that could speak to that? Uh, for us an update on when we can expect that? If not, we can pass along to next week as well, Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
I'm, I'm, I got this.
Let's hold that to next week, till we have somebody who can speak to it.
We can hold it, we can hold this item till next week.
Okay, and it's, yeah, it's just a week away, I apologize, I have, have a sidebar going. All right, um, Mr. Foot, item thirty-nine.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. The, this is, um, this is a time-sensitive issue. I found out, I think it was Thursday or Friday morning, that there were some people on King's Highway. Now, King's Highway, we redistricted, uh, last summer, the, um, the whole block of Ward One that went from I-55 down Northside Drive to North State Street, then back on Meadowbrook, that includes, you know, Banner Hall and St. Richard School and, and a bunch of other things. Far, on the far west side of that, there's King's Highway, and that was, you turn it over and through the redistricting, uh, to, into Ward Three.
No, 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 no.
And, so.
Banner Hall is now Ward Three?
Yeah.
Oh, there, okay.
They're excited to come, for you to come see.
I was just joking, we're glad to have anybody in the city, we just, we just, uh, trying to get the maps and, and.
They want to meet you. There's a lot of people that eat at Broad Street that want to meet you, Councilmen Stokes, but that's the reason for this.
And they're telling you about eating, I'm not gonna be late.
Okay. So, what I found out last Thursday was that some of the people on King's Highway had gotten letters saying they were gonna, they needed, they were in, in Ward One rather than Ward Three. And, and so I said, we, we got to get this addressed so we don't have any election, um, challenges and, or, or, it's not fair to them if they're not voting for Councilman Stokes and, and don't have a chance to vote for him when they're actually in Ward Three.
Do they vote at Board School, is that part of Board School?
I can't say.
Okay.
That is, that was a typical precinct, uh, voting block. So, we need to figure out what, what went wrong and how those letters went out and get it straightened out before the primary. So the, if the only election that's really impacted on the near, near term is the primary, but that's only two weeks away. And so, Angela, if you could kind of give us, uh, the drill here on, on what we might do to straighten this out before the election?
I'm waiting to be recognized. Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, uh, Miss, you know, it's a discussion item, so Mr. Foot just called on you, so you're, we're good to go.
Angela Harris, municipal clerk. Yes, Councilman Foot, uh, when the addresses were sent over to the circuit clerk's office, there were about fifty-five residents that was inadvertently left off of being moved into Ward Three. So the initial letters that went out, they only went out stating that the ward had changed to Three. It didn't say that they were moved to Ward One. And so as of yesterday, everything has been rectified. All of the addresses have been changed in sems. I mailed out letters to those fifty-five residents to inform them that they are now in Ward Three, and there was only one person that came in to vote, and I contacted her to let her know that her ballot would be voided and that she had an opportunity to come back to absentee, uh, vote, and I also asked her to call me to advise me on how she wanted, um, to proceed, because she is over the age of sixty-five, I could mail her a ballot. So it was only one person that had voted, and everybody else, um, should be receiving their letters today or tomorrow based upon how the mail runs.
Okay, well, thank you so much, I appreciate your, your, um, you know, your readiness to go ahead and address the thing and get it straightened out, because, uh, you know, we don't want to need another election kerfuffle that, that gets people, uh, upset with, you know, not being able to vote in the, for the people they want to vote for. So I appreciate that, and, and I, I hope there's no other problems out there with addresses and letters sent to the wrong people, but, uh, thank you for your quick response.
Thank you, um, thank you, Ms. Harris and Mr. Foot. All right, uh, is Mr. Martin in the room? All right, Vali Amora Hall update.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
Uh, it, it is my understanding that we might have to go into executive session for all three of these.
Okay, thank you for that.
I guess the question is if it's time-sensitive or could it wait?
Till next week? Can it, we, I, I, Mr. Martin had told me we were gonna have to go and do executive session for item forty-two. Um, but I, I didn't know about the other two. So, if we have to go into executive session and he's not here, then we need to just wait?
I went out and asked, um, uh, Deputy City Attorney, because my stomach was growling as well. And so, you know, if, if she could speak to if it's time-sensitive or not, if this is something that we could take up.
I agree with you. If we can hold this till next week, that would be ideal. Plus, we're all really hot.
Yeah, I think, um, none of these are high priorities that can't be, um, held until next week. I'm sorry. Our shared car, Special Assistant City Attorney, I think all of these can be held till next week.
Perfect, all right. Well, then, we are finished with the discussion items, colleagues. We've got closing, uh, wait, wait, there's one thing. All of, did everybody get the monthly report of privileged taxes? Let me, there's a little show of hands, okay? Everybody saw that? All right, uh, any closings, colleagues? Mr. Griselle?
Madam President, thank you. Uh, tonight, we will host our Ward Four Spring 2025 Town Hall at, uh, six PM at Quantanilla Missionary Baptist Church on Clinton Boulevard. Uh, there we will have, you know, members from the administration, uh, and we will also entertain, uh, questions and concerns from residents. Again, it's at six o'clock at Quantanilla Missionary Baptist Church, which is forty-nine thirty-five Clinton Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, did anybody else have any closings? Oh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, uh, first, I'd like to take a moment to recognize, uh, the life of a friend of mine who passed away, uh, former mayor, Sylvester Turner of Houston, Texas. Uh, he was the first mayor that took time to sit down with me when I was mayor-elect, uh, so I'm gonna miss him. Uh, he was a great man. Uh, and then on a brighter note, I want to recognize, uh, both of my little girls. Uh, today is Alake Mariyama Lumumba's birthday, she is the big eleven years old. Uh, and Friday will be Nubia Ngozi's birthday, well, she will be the big seven years old. So, uh, happy birthday to both of my, my little girls.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. Hartley?
I just want to, uh, just make a note, tomorrow, uh, over in Ward Five, we will have a cleanup along, uh, Robertson Road, and this is sponsored by the Center for Social Entrepreneurship, uh, and it starts around nine AM. If anyone wants more information, they can contact Keep Jackson Beautiful, or they can call my office, but it's the Center for Social, uh, Entrepreneurship, cleanup on Robertson Road tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Banks?
Yes, I also want to just take a time, note a personal privilege to congratulate my daughter, Brianna Laney Banks. Uh, she will be graduating with her law degree from Texas A&amp;M.
Congratulations. Um, I, and I get to be Mr. Stokes for a minute, and I, in his opening, yeah, I, I'm not sure I can, um, but anyway, the opening and closings from Ward Three are Reverend Dr. Howard Lee Hodges, um, Mr. John Coffey Senior, Mr. Lee Samuel Henderson, Mr. Benj Go, Benji, excuse me, Benji Terrell, Mrs. Tommy Lee Gilmore Williams, and Mrs. Shirley Webber Lee. It's all in honor of these people, he's closing. Uh, all right, so, uh, Mr. Foot?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to close, uh, the meeting in honor of two, um, good friends of mine who are veterans, Nolan Cullen, who passed away about eight days ago, he was a veteran of the Vietnam War, a good friend, and then Mr. John Price, who passed away on Ash Wednesday at the age of a hundred and one, who fought in the Battle of the Bulge in World War Two, and a longtime attorney here in the city of Jackson.
It's amazing. Well, thank you for that, Mr. Foot. All right, colleagues, is there absolutely anything else to become before this body? Do not forget that we are meeting in one week here at council, so anything else? Not this meeting is adjourned.